Good evening and welcome to the Instructional Committee for May 14th, 2025. Tonight we'll be hearing a presentation from the Great Schools Partnership and a report out from Concord High School about end of the year college partnerships and the career fair and pathways programs. Very exciting stuff. We have with us tonight Barb Higgins, Board Member Barb Higgins, Instructional Committee Member Sarah Sadowski, myself Brenda Hastings, and we'll have Instructional Committee Member Sarah Robinson joining us in just a little bit. We also have Assistant Superintendent John Fabrizio and Assistant Superintendent Kimberly are here with us right now, and we'll be adding some other people along the way. So, thank you. Go right ahead, Kim.
Okay, so I'm not sure if you can see the persons in the room. Can you see who's in the room?
We can see you, yep. We see little pictures of the different people where the owl is looking. So, right now, we can see two of you.
Okay, so we have Brenda Hastings, who's the Chair of the Instructional Committee here, and Board Member Higgins and Board Member Sadowski, and the other Assistant Superintendent, as mentioned, and in the room listening in, who you may have met earlier, is Dr. Tim Herbert, who's the Principal of the Concord High School, and educator Leslie Berry. So, they are listening into this as we get started and get introductions from, you want to tell a little bit about yourselves, and then we'll go ahead and write into your PowerPoint and do a little question session afterwards.
Great, thanks, Kim. Hi, everyone. My name's Katie Thompson. I am the Managing Director at Great Schools Partnership. A little bit about GSP on this first slide here. We have a six-person project team that's working on this project. So, I'm one of the folks on the project. The main coaches are Leah Tuckman and Gabby Stitler. Gabby, do you want to unmute and introduce yourself?
Hello, everybody. I'm Gabriella Stitler. I am so excited to be working with you and your teams. I've gone out a couple times to do some focus groups, and you just have wonderful staff, very student-centered, really great conversations coming out of it. So, I'm very appreciative to be with you today.
And the other folks that are missing from the call today, we have Duke Albany's, who's our Senior Policy Advisor, and he is the former Commissioner of Education in Maine, Jose Bo, who's our Director of School Partnerships, and Brian Whitmer, who's our Director of Research and Evaluation. And a lot of the work that we're going to talk about today is work that Brian, Leah, and Gabby have already started diving into, and Duke, actually.
And I just wanted to add in as well that Duke Albany's is working directly with Karen Fisher Anderson right now, doing policy reviews. So, they basically have a copy of all of our policies and are going to be looking through the lens of equity and diversity and looking at the language.
That's right. Thanks for mentioning that, Kim. So, GSP is a nonprofit school support organization. We're based in Portland, Maine. We are working across New England to redesign public education and improve learning for all students. We have a number of core tenants on our website that you can read through here, and we like to point out that that first one is really about advocating for anti-racist, inclusive, and equitable practices, policies, and cultures. Our mission is to support, challenge, and collaborate with educators and communities to achieve educational excellence and equity. And we have a definition of educational equity that we use that has three parts: ensuring just outcomes for each student, raising marginalized voices, and challenging imbalances of power and privilege. So, our work together this year has a few different parts to it. The first part is something that we've already started working on, and this is the ecosystem review. So, this ecosystem review asks what are the structures, policies, procedures, and systems that exist to promote equity, and what could be improved to better support educational equity in the district? And so, as Karen said, I mean, sorry, as Kim said earlier, Duke has already started working on some of this with Karen Fisher Anderson, looking at the policies within the district and thinking about how can those policies be better aligned to the district's vision for educational equity. And included in this ecosystem review, we're reviewing current data that exists. We're working alongside the Project Aware data collection to think about how we can use that data collectively to see what's going on in the district. And then, as Gabby mentioned earlier, also doing some focus groups to see what's really happening, what people are feeling and experiencing in schools, in classrooms across the district. The result of this ecosystem review is a report. It's a short and condensed report, but it themes what we're finding and offers recommendations for next steps. So, it's in no way an analysis, but it is like just a report with some recommendations for next steps.
And I wanted to just say, Katie, and just add in, if you don't mind, that you have it listed below, but you have already started those focus groups. The focus groups will be when it's student-based, is only at Runlet and the high school, and the students sign a permission slip from their parents to be part of that focus group. And then, educators at all across all the buildings have volunteered to be part of the focus groups. They either happen during the day or after school. And their kind of questions are like, you know, what makes you happy to come to school? What makes you worried about coming to school? They're pretty innocuous questions, but get a sense of the culture. And I think your next stop is CRTC, and that's tomorrow, correct?
That's me tomorrow.
Okay. So, I don't want to steal from the slide.
Just a quick question.
Just quickly, Sarah?
Sorry. I just had a quick question about the focus groups, or would you let me hold questions till the end?
No, I don't mind.
Excellent. I was just curious how students were selected for the focus groups?
So, the guidance was given to school leadership to identify a mixture of students who would be able to give like a very full portrait of the student experience. So, we really asked for thinking about students who have just a variety of different like traits and personalities and interests to try to get a really full picture. So, we always encourage like considering students with IEPs or considering students who are on student government, just to get the full range of student voice.
Thank you. And fortunately, we have Tim Herbert here, so he can speak to the high school selection.
So, what we did is we put it out to advisors at Concord High School, and they put it out to students. If there was an interest, they would indicate an interest. Advisors would put forth students, and that gave us a selection of students across each grade level. And what we did is did a random selection from there. We came up with 30 students, gave them a parent permission form, and all students who returned with a parent permission form before, prior to the day of the focus group were able to participate.
Thank you. Good. Okay. You want to carry on with this slide?
Absolutely. So, as we've been discussing, we have focus groups that are running with staff and with students. And the purpose of the focus groups is to really look for opportunities where we're collecting street data, to see how CSD supports each student and staff, to really think about opportunities for celebration and opportunities for growth. And so, in this process, what we've done is we've reached out to each of the schools. We have scheduled and have conducted some, almost all at this point, of those focus groups with both the staff and the students. And the questions that we're asking are around belonging and support, academic expectations and rigor, and then professional development and growth. So, we're getting a sense for, just holistically, where people are coming in. For the staff focus groups, we're getting a range of staff in a variety of different roles who are offering up experiences and perspectives, which has been really helpful for us to think about how to make this inclusive and really designed towards each of the adults that are in your school community. Are there any other questions about the focus groups?
None right now, thank you.
All right. If anything else comes up, feel free to jump in.
Yep.
So, the other portion of the work is to form an advisory committee. So, once the ecosystem findings are gathered, the policy review is done, and those focus groups are conducted and themed, then we meet with the advisory committee to develop clear, actionable goals that are aligned to the district's strategic plan and those ecosystem findings. So, we synthesize the data together collectively, and we come up with some next steps. The committee will work to review the data and recommendations, develop actionable goals aligned to the strategic plan, and set targets and timelines to evaluate progress.
And I think, Kim, if I remember correctly, you have a team already, right, that is this kind of advisory committee that could be working on this once the data is collected?
Yes, yes. And as you start to develop the report, Terry Wolf and myself are going to do kind of a pre-report debrief to look at that street data and develop some talking points that might influence the strategic plan as well as we're really looking to revise that.
All right. So, then the next question becomes professional learning. Once you have actionable steps and target areas, you need to think about growth trajectory and planning. So, in thinking about both administrators and educators, the next step will be to develop a five-year arc of learning, to identify cohort of district staff to lead the work, and then to train the trainer for that facilitation, so that the staff is, you're fostering your internal leadership for staff while you're also supporting the individual growth of student educators on your teams. Coordinating with Kim, the Assistant Superintendent, and the PD Committee on the creation of the Professional Growth Development Plan, it will train district staff to facilitate those meetings around staff awareness relative to MTSS, SEL, and Effective Instructional Practice.
And thank you. And Gabby, I'm just going to interrupt for one second. I want to introduce Sarah Robinson, Board Member, who just arrived. And do you mind just repeating this slide because, so that Sarah can just get caught up a little bit?
Absolutely.
Thank you all for your patience. There was a calendar miscommunication on my end, but very happy to be here and grateful to be participating with you guys. So, thank you for accommodating me. I appreciate you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, just to catch you up really briefly, we're overviewing the work that we are doing. So, for this slide, what we're talking about is taking the ecosystem review that is being conducted, the focus groups that are being conducted, and using that, leveraging that advisory committee to plan and design some professional learning for staff. And so, for this, the next step would be to design that arc of professional learning for administrators and educators, to identify a cohort of staff that would lead the work. So, you're going to build up your own internal leadership around this, and then train the trainer in that facilitation. So, you're building your internal capacity and then individual growth. So, we'll coordinate with the Assistant Superintendent and the PD Committee in the creation of that plan, and train district staff to facilitate the professional learning around staff awareness relative to MTSS, which is multi-tiered Systems of Support, SEL, which is social and emotional learning, and Effective Instructional Practice, which is so exciting and fun to talk about. So, I'm very excited about this part.
Sarah, did you have a question?
Oh, it was just the acronym MTSS. Thank you.
And important to this is that we have two grants going on simultaneously, and one is with Fern Seiden, who's our Director of Staff and Student Wellness. So, the reference to MTSS and SEL is an overlap to the work that we'll be proposing. And the plan is for the implementation of the five-year plan would be the start of 2026.
So, that actually, Kim, leads right to the next slide. We thought it would be helpful to also overview some of the partnership we've been doing with Fern Seiden with Project Aware. Project Aware, it is an acronym that stands for Advancing Wellness and Resiliency in Education, and it's federally funded by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. It's aimed at improving mental health in schools. It focuses on increasing awareness for mental health issues among school-aged youth, providing training and staff, for staff to recognize and address these issues, so both proactive trainings and then responsive trainings, and connecting students and families with needed resources. And so, we've been partnered with Fern. We're really looking at opportunities to connect the work that we're doing together so that it feels like part of a cohesive picture. With a needs assessment and asset map, we're using street data that has been collected, but we're also leveraging some of the data points from the other work that we're doing with the focus groups, and we're make recommendations for opportunities to clarify, strengthen, and build those proactive and reactive supports to staff, students, and families. And that also will align with a five-year professional development plan that we're talking about in the previous slide. These are email addresses.
If anyone wants to reach out with questions, you're welcome to. And we didn't go into too much detail on content today. I think the biggest part of this project is really upfront data collection and getting a strong picture of what's happening in the district so that we can then design the professional learning to be aligned to the areas of need for the district. So, that's kind of the next phase or what we'll move into for next year. We'll take any questions, and happy to also have Kim add anything that we left out.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Gabriella, you mentioned street data. I'm so interested to hear, like,
what does that entail? I mean, are we using like the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, or what does that look like?
Yeah. So, Fern and I have been digging in so deeply to so many pieces of street data. So, it does include access to those, some of those pieces, like the, but also their staff surveys and things like that. We're looking at attendance data. We're looking at so many pieces of data and pulling it together to make some informed, really like robust decisions and plans. Yeah. I could actually pull up the email. There are many pieces of data that we're looking at, and it is a lot of fun.
But it does sound really fun.
If you recall, we purchased EduClima as a data warehouse tool. And so, as accurately as we can, we're inputting student attendance, numbers of visits to nurses, number of behavioral infractions, assessment performance data. So, Tom Crumrind's working closely with Fern to make sure that that system is fully being used and that people are regularly entering that data. So, that will be an access point for these folks.
And I will piggyback on that with both the grants that she's working on, there's also a grant that focuses on the community resources that are available. And so, Fern has done a tremendous job of partnering with different organizations and compiling and pooling some of those pieces of data as well, so that we're able to think holistically within the school system, but also external to the school system.
Can you just, I understand from your presentation that you are at the beginning of now the focus groups. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And how long do you expect, I know it said the first half of May you were starting. How long do you expect these focus groups to take place?
I think this is the last week. I think that tomorrow is the last day, if I'm not mistaken, with the last campus, with a student-staff focus group.
Okay, that's great. And then you move on to the forming an advisory committee?
Yeah. So, then it will be synthesizing all of that data and starting to put it together, and then meeting first with Kim to kind of debrief and go through those pieces. And then the next step would be to take that to the advisory committee.
Could you just give us, sorry, a rough idea of what, I've got like three different steps here, and what the timeframe might be for each of those steps? So, getting the information to the advisory committee, and then how long do you expect the advisory committee to work to develop their actionable goals?
Yeah. In other districts where we've done this work, it can take up to the next full year. It really depends on if you've already formed your committee and how well that committee is already working together. In cases where we have to form the committee from scratch, it will definitely take the whole year. But if you already have a committee established, then we can kind of jump right in with looking at the data, and then that process can move a little bit faster. So, I would say mid-year next year, we'll probably have those draft actionable steps.
Okay. Can I ask a question about how, so did you say you already have an advisory committee formed? Did I mishear that?
So, we have participants who have expressed interest, and we want to pull in people from the Equity Advisory Committee. So, that's an existing standing committee.
Okay.
It'd be, Kara's on that committee, but it'd be wonderful if anyone else from the board would like to join. And we're going to look at availability and commitment levels from various staff. So, I would want the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services to be part of that committee. I would want Tom Crumrind to be part of that committee, and representation across the K through 12.
Would it be possible to include students?
Do you typically include students in an advisory?
Yeah, we usually try to.
Okay, great. Because like nothing about us without us, you know what I mean?
Yeah, totally agree.
Cool. Now, I knew you guys were on my wavelength. It's Great Schools Partnership. You know what you're doing.
And students are the best. So, they like bring joy and are incredibly brilliant when they are able to engage and when we hold space for them. So...
And they won't lie to you.
No, they will be very honest.
Yeah, yeah. That's great. Okay.
And then, am I correct in assuming that the professional learning portion of this, did you say that that's a five-year arc?
Right. And so, it will basically take shape as that advisory committee starts to build out, like what are those themes that have emerged from the data? What are the things that we need to prioritize working on in our district? And then, in that case, Kim and our GSP team will work on what does that look like for the arc of learning over the next five years. for the arc of learning over the next five years.
Okay, great. Thank you. Barb, did you have anything? No?
No, it's fascinating.
It is fascinating. It really is.
I also, you know, really appreciate everybody's grace for me getting here late. My question is more like for Kim. Our work with GSP, is that grant-funded? Or is it general funds?
It's a combination.
Okay. Could you clarify that for me? Because I don't know much about much.
So, we have, we, in the past, had a Director of Equity, Inclusion.
Thank you for reminding me how this is getting done. I appreciate that.
And so, that position still exists in the budget. So, there's operating budget monies that are available. So, this, oh, I'm sorry. This whole time I've been.
Well, you've been sitting with an owl. You've got the owl.
The owl is looking at you.
The owl is looking directly in your eyes. No, that's really kind. Yeah.
So, I'm worried about doing the speaker in the owl because they'll make us.
Yeah, you're doing fine.
So, yeah. Where were we?
I just wanted to, yeah.
I'll jump in there. So, there's part of it that was, had to do with when we had our Director of Equity and Diversity. We had that position, and we had part of the money there. And the other part is through our Project Aware grant. So, it's kind of split between the two of those to develop this. It meets all the goals of both of those positions.
And you understand, I'm not asking that for us in this room. I'm asking that for anybody who would question us taking on a, yeah, how are we spending taxpayer dollars? And so, very clearly, it's all taken care of. We don't have to worry about that. It's no effect on the budget. We're good.
And you'll notice probably, or at least it might be somewhat intuitive, is that this reaches the goal, the priorities of this strategic plan. Because our number-one priority is equity and diversity. Our number-two one is curriculum and instructional assessment. Number-three is student wellness and social and emotional learning. So, yeah.
Bang, bang, bang. Yeah.
And so, we're appreciative of this partnership because we realized after three years into the strategic plan that we couldn't do this work on our own.
Yep. Excellent. Thank you all very much for the walkthrough. I appreciate you. I've done work with GSP before. You're a great team of people. You know what you're doing. You come highly recommended. So.
Thank you so much for having us. Yeah, we've appreciated working with you so far, too, and really excited. We have next year ahead of us to continue.
And I would, and this is public, like, I had the focus groups with teachers you have and staff. You have amazing, amazing staff and teams of teachers working in your buildings that are incredibly dedicated to children and really student-centered. Like, they really care deeply and think deeply about how to, like, help kids learn. And it was, it's been really powerful to get to hear your educators talk about that and think about that. So, I wanted to make sure I say that.
Thank you. It's an embarrassment of riches we've got going on here in Concord. We're very lucky people.
And if there's anything that we can do to help support you in any way, please do let us know. Reach out to us and let us know.
Definitely. We'll be happy to come back in the fall and report back on how it's going.
Great. And so, please send along this PowerPoint so I can put it into the board packet, and we can share it with them at our next June meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
I'm glad I got in here to see the end of that.
Oh, I knew that was your jam. Yeah, that's, those are my peeps. So, we'll move on with a presentation from Dr. Hebert and Ms. Berry.
This is from my alma mater. I'm so excited to learn more.
That's gonna be the second part of it.
Oh, it is? Okay. All right.
So, our first highlight, I have Leslie here with me because I think right from the beginning, Leslie's been one of my team players, working tirelessly on creating pathways at Concord High School, which really breaks down to career-connected learning at CHS. It's helping students to see the importance and relevance of each course they take towards a post-secondary goal. So, this past week, if any of you were fortunate enough to have the opportunity to walk through the Concord High School gym, the fruit of Leslie's and many other committee members' labors came to fruition in our Career Fair, our Pathways Career Fair at Concord High School, where we had over 50 businesses, organizations in our community and neighboring communities participate. And students got to learn a lot about how the various levels of education go into jobs in different fields, and how something that may seem as basic as a construction company has jobs that range from project engineers to a community, PR person, all that stuff. So, they get to learn about the various roles in each of these pathways clusters through this experience. And it really is coordinated through the efforts of Leslie and our team to put this together for the benefit of our students. So, without further ado, I'll move into, if you want to go to the next slide. I'll just, Leslie, if you want to feel free.
Go quickly. It's going through some of these?
Yeah, just to give the fundamental understanding of our pathways work.
So, our pathways are broken into 16 different sectors, which are quite diverse. And you can see from agriculture to STEM, there's something for everyone. We partnered the pathways work with the Career Fair, and it became the Pathways Career Fair. And we said, this is a no-brainer fit to be able to start kind of branding some of the pathways work that we've been doing with the Career Fair to kind of have it be the culminating experience for our students and staff with the CRTC and CHS program. You gotcha. We have, at this time right now, we just checked the spreadsheet, 164 of our students have opted into a pathway. We have 13 seniors who will receive pathway recognition at their senior awards. And what that means is they've completed the recommended number of courses that relate to their STEM pathway, agriculture pathway, finance pathway, whichever it may be. They've had some sort of ELO experience that they've done, which is one of the requirements of the pathway award. And, or they've done an early college course. They've also completed a portfolio and shared that portfolio with us, and they've done that using Schoology. So, with this being a relatively new initiative, we were thrilled with 13 seniors to be able to complete this. My next bullet there says 60-plus juniors are, like, in line next to do this. So, you can see that every year, this is going to be growing once the kids kind of see what's coming. So, we're really excited to see what happens with our 60 kids.
I did want to mention and recognize the educators who have come forward because with every, with every student who's doing a pathways, they need to be tethered to an educator. And this is the educator's responsibility above and beyond their coursework. So, it's to validate, recognize, kind of put a stamp of approval on the work, and to meet with them from time to time to see how their pathways work is going, and then to celebrate their final portfolio. So, I just want to do a shout-out to those persons who have come forward to help because that's a big, big lift.
So, as probably the oldest person in the room, in thinking back to all the paths education takes, for a long time, we would channel kids into pathways in middle school, vocational education, college prep. And typically, it held people back. We were organizing them incorrectly, as far as I'm concerned. Then I feel like education got away from it, and it was a little bit of hodgepodge. Take what you want, you know, here's 50 English classes. Pick the one you like. And you have kids graduating from high school not thinking anything they did matters in what they want to be when they grow up. What I like about this is I could choose a path. I could choose something and get, you know, into the middle of my junior or even the beginning of my senior year and realize, this is not at all what I want. But 50 things that I've learned here fit into what I do want. So, I just, it was just like an aha moment for me. Like, we provide structure and a direction for kids, which is gonna make them focused and likely work harder. But if it's not the right direction, it's not like you're stuck now. You can take, and I think of that student, the CRTC student that's in construction, and she was doing all of the construction part in her internship. And then she went and had an office job member, and she was like, oh, my God, this is what I want to do. And she didn't even think that existed in construction. So, that's the part of it that excites me, that we can organize kids, and they organize themselves, and set goals and meet them and move along. But they're not stuck in something that suddenly isn't working. So, it's just cool. It was just an aha moment.
Just to add to that, Barbara, I think the great thing that we did with, I know the great thing we did with the pathways is, in addition to our program of studies and the way it lines up, we've also got a separate document that really digs into, like, we'd say, construction trades pathways, the one you brought up. But it goes through careers that you can enter into with a high school diploma, careers that you need, you know, certification in areas, to careers that you need a four-year, you know, degree from an institution in order to, you know, occupy those careers. So, we, a pathway isn't, it doesn't take away the opportunities or any of that sort of what you described in the past, where a student was funneled into a pathway, so to speak, but you felt like it held them back. This is meant to just provide meaning to what they're doing. If it's an area of interest and you want to go to a four-year institution, this is recommended for you. These are the courses, and this is why. And if it's, you don't want to do a four-year institution, you want to get right into the career right outside of school, you can still be in the same pathway as an AP student and go right into a career right out of high school. So, that's the, you know, I think the sentiments behind those other documents, we have to really break it down for students. And counselors and teachers such as Leslie really go through those with students to guide them in the decision as to how they want to, you know, navigate the pathways. This slide, I put this slide in here just to give you an idea of how Leslie and others really organized this Career Fair by what we've characterized as three career clusters that all the pathways fall into. So, each table, each area, whether it was, you know, Pat's Peak recreational, or tourism, or a hospitality, regardless, they were grouped into these various career clusters, and they were set up that way in the gym. So, as you went through, it was done with tact and meaningfulness because the students are hearing this language, they're hearing about pathways, and they're hearing about career clusters. As they're going through, they're seeing the actual organizations that fall within these, that they could be working at. And they're learning about, again, the various levels of jobs that exist at some place, such as Pat's Peak, beyond a snow groomer or the business manager, the other event coordinators and public relations that also exist at a place like Pat's Peak that they might have not have ever thought of.
And I wanted to point out that John and I had gone over to see this, and one of the cool things was balloons were set up. Were you gonna say this?
We were just gonna say that. You take it.
Go ahead.
So, like, balloons, 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 but the balloons, sorry. The balloons were set up to indicate that they were currently hiring. So, students were just, they were so engaged, right, John? It was just amazing.
So, as Tim already said, we had 49, about 50 local businesses. We had 100 career people. Students had potential job opportunities. But new this year, we kind of purposely sent out our registration to the businesses that we invited and asked them how they would like to support us beyond just the Career Fair. And we figured it was a great opportunity, as we're reaching out to contact them, to see if they would be interested in having a field trip, being a guest presenter, zooming into a class, offering an informational interview, reviewing a piece of student work, or even coming into a class while students were presenting to be an authentic audience. And we were floored with the number of responses that we got just on that registration of the number of businesses and business professionals who want to kind of partner with some of our teachers, which obviously helps our students in their classes. But this is just an image of the fair. It was hopping. It went nine to one. We saw a lot of foot traffic in there. And it really is a nice partnership between CHS and CRTC. Kate Amrell helps, Jessamyn Rockwell, Sarah Hans, and Kristen Cooney. So, it's a really nice team of us that all kind of put a lot of work into this, to this one. Here was kind of those results off from that survey. 16 different businesses offered us a workplace tour. 32 offered to be a guest speaker for class. 18 offered to be a virtual guest, like a Q and A session, or a project consultant, or do like a mock interview for students. 14 offered to mentor a class project or act as an authentic audience. And teachers connected with people. Our job was to teachers to say, hey, just don't come and dump your kids down here and chat down in the four-year. We want you engaged. We had teachers reach out to us afterwards to say, this was amazing. One of our math teachers at the high school who teaches geometry, algebra, and statistics said she has four different connections that she's made just by grabbing business cards. And we were like, that was the game plan this year. We heard from an English teacher who does some journalism work, and she made some connections with marketing or editing through Concord Monitor. And they did a nice social media push also through Facebook to just say, thank you so much for having us at the Career Fair, and these are great partnerships. We also were savvy enough on this registration to say, we have a wonderful ELO coordinator, Jessamyn Rockwell. And she does a lot of that intensive work with the students to say, I'm ready to dive in there. I'm ready to go explore this and see if this is really what I want to do or if this is not what I want to do. Because sometimes that's a great thing to cross off the list to say, I didn't want to do that. So, businesses also on the registration said, I'd love to have a student do an ELO with me. I'd love to have a student do an apprenticeship with me, paid or unpaid. I'd love to offer a workplace site tour to a small group of students. So, some of those things that are kind of, Jessamyn and the ELO Coordinator's office related beyond what a classroom, a teacher, you know, classroom teachers don't set up internships. We go see Jessamyn Rockwell for that. But just, we are really excited about the number of participants. And 12 people said they would like to be on our advisory board. So, that, I mean, easy pickings now of, right, of just by generating some of the interest. We were really proud.
You just don't know until you ask. You get all worried about, like, well, I don't want to be imposed and.
Yeah. And the picture was a tattoo artist, and, which was a fantastic career to have in the Career Fair. And a lot of the kids were enjoying talking. They were really dynamic.
So cool.
That's a fabulous profession, by the way.
Yeah, it really is.
And I would add something that gets lost sometimes in the intentionality of this sort of an event, and the intentionality of the pathways, and the students' connection to, you know, authentic work experiences, is it refines those preparedness skills for when they do leave Concord High School. They're better prepared, whether it's through the mock interviews, the Q and As in the classroom, the guest speakers explaining to them their experiences and expectations as they were working towards a career the student may aspire to be in. In addition, these work-based learning opportunities that are provided through our ELO coordinator, Jessamyn Rockwell, really gives the students that professional setting experience. And she's doing, from community service-type extended learning opportunities, early college extending learning opportunities to aid internships, extended learning opportunities for students. So, it's a wide range. I just think it, oftentimes, that gets overlooked because it's pretty cool stuff. But it gets overlooked just how much is teaching those soft professional skills that the students are gonna need to be employable when they leave Concord High School.
And Jessamyn reported that she has over 100 students doing ELOs with her this year.
So exciting.
Very exciting. It all connects back to pathways because ELOs are a part of the pathway requirements in order for seniors for recognition. But we do have some future plans moving forward. And we plan to go to see the facilitators at the high school to share our list of businesses that would like to partner. We figured instead of rolling it out to the entire faculty and feeling like a mad, you know, scrabble to get that, that if the facilitators were the ones to facilitate that process to say, I'm interested in having something, or I'm interested in doing something more, and, you know, facilitating the field trip opportunities through Tim and getting those approvals. Freshman orientation, we always do a pathway introduction for those students. We are still working on forming our advisory board. And we're hoping to partner with Jay Richard to do some eighth-grade pathway introductions, possibly for next school year, and obviously, a continued push of career-connected learning and pathway focus.
That's amazing. So, such great work. Well done.
Thank you.
I know I have a couple of questions, and then it's all me. One, you had 16 students graduating this year with?
13.
13. Is it the goal at some point in the future to have all of the high school students involved in a pathway of?
in a pathway of some sort? Or is it?
It's, it's not, I don't think we'll ever put it as a requirement, but the goal is to engage every high school student in thinking post-secondary. What is your goal after here?
Right.
And even if they, they don't necessarily complete a pathway, that they've, you know, gone in and out of pathways, they've had some sort of meaningful learning experience, and, and we hope that it helps them either narrow their focus and you're, you're not having as many students go into a field perhaps right out, or into schooling perhaps right out, that they're really not interested in, that they're able to, you know, weed out by going through these experiences.
And I love hearing that it's not an all or nothing. And that, that's so important.
Yep. We had, we had students who were thinking, I, I kind of want to be in both, two pathways. And we were like, well, you can, you can hang out there for a little while, but, you know, we'd like you to, to, to have a bit more of a, a focus, mainly because we have to print their certificates, so we have room for one, right? But it was like a business finance, and it was like, yeah, there's absolutely some crossover in many of these.
The other thing I think it does, back to your question around should everyone, is it just changes the overall mindset and thinking of the purpose of high school. You know, how many times do you hear people say, why do I need algebra? I never used it in my life? Of course, we use algebra all the time, every day, you just don't know it. But what this does is gets kids talking. So a student comes into Concord High, maybe from somewhere else, and they're chatting about what pathway they're in. What does that mean? Well, then we know what class to take in case you want, you know, now suddenly it's just a mindset shift of what education is at Concord High School. Oh, so maybe they don't want to choose a pathway, but now they're thinking, okay, so I'm taking these classes, what would I use them for? Like, it's just such a great mindset shift. So even if you don't sign, you know, necessarily commit to one, you're thinking about it now. Not just looking at your list of requirements.
What am I going to get through to get out?
Right.
I think there are some kids that think that way, and this would be, if it was meaningful for them, I think it, it's a lot more impressive and, and it makes a better impression on them. I guess my other, my other question was, what percentage of students with IEPs or are multi-language learners, do, do they participate? Are they encouraged to participate? Great.
Every student through either the school counselor, case manager, and that goes for both multilingual learners as well as a special ed population, receives information about this. It's, it's not a requirement. I, I've seen our program of studies. We share that with families and students in hopes that it invokes a conversation. You know, our Career Fair opportunity, ELO opportunities are not limited to anybody. If you have an idea and we don't already have it, you know, put together as an ELO for you, bring it to us, talk to us about it, and we try and make it happen. So we try to make it as accessible as possible.
I can't imagine we could ask for more than that, guys. We're pretty lucky. You're right. It is an embarrassment of riches in Concord. We're doing really well. Thank you. Because it's not easy, and it's a lot of extra, and it's not always noticed or appreciated, but we're, we're working on that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Did you guys have any questions? No, it's learning a lot about some really, really, this is why it's my favorite committee.
Oh, I know. This is what I say too. I'm not even on it anymore, but there I am.
This is like the real stuff of, of school. So thank you for presenting and giving us an opportunity to share it with the full board.
The next part that Leslie and I have to touch base on, in pathways, you know, it's career-connected learning as well as, as I mentioned earlier, a number of these pathways. If there's a career desire, you have to attend a post-secondary institution of higher ed. And Kathleen has been pleasantly prompting me to reach out to our, our neighboring higher ed institutions and get agreements with them that would benefit our students if they attend there. New England College has entered into a partnership with us, where seniors at Concord High School, you don't have to do, you don't have to apply to New England College. You don't have to be an accepted individual. At New England College can take two free undergraduate courses. Yep. And in addition to that, and this year, we have 11 students accepted and planning to attend New England College. A Concord High School graduate will receive $10,000 off the top. Each year they attend New England College, for, for four years that they're there, they will receive up to $40,000 in reduction in cost, in addition to any other financial aid and scholarships they will receive. And that's, that's just, again, it's a local institution of higher ed who aligns with our philosophy. They, we're going to enter into additional conversations with them. What, what can they offer at the high school? The, the two free courses at New England College is great. Transportation's always a barrier. We want to make everything as accessible as possible. We're entering into conversations, what could you offer at the Concord High School site? If we have available rooms, you have an available professor, what can we make happen here? So, so we're, we're having those discussions, that's NEC. But we're also, again, Community College System New Hampshire, in discussions of similar, you know, conversations, as well as SNHU, UNH, just our, our close by partners, so.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
What a gift for students, too. Thank you. I can attest, it is a great institution, where I got my undergrad. This is really, really cool. What an opportunity. Tip of the hat, man. That's awesome. See? Favorite committee.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what Sarah was saying. It's fantastic.
More of this.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
There's so many hours of communication and emails and meetings and planning and stuff that goes into things like this. And, yeah, thanks for all the hours, the many hours, this team of people.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Good time.
Have an easy end of the school year. Yes. May it be gentle to all of us.
Happy homestretch.
Is there anything else this evening?
Well, that concludes our agenda for this evening.
That is wonderful.
Seeing no other things, I would welcome a motion.
To adjourn.
A second.
Yay, the Saras.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to boost?
Nope, great.
This is our meeting tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.